This is the regular meeting of the Mobile City Council, Tuesday, June 16th. Please stand for our invocation led by Pastor David Edwards, Jr., reconciling lives to the Kingdom Church Ministries and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Father in our God, we come this morning to thank you for this another opportunity to come before your throne of grace that we may obtain mercy in this time of need. God, we thank you for this day. We thank you, God, that you always hear and do answer our prayers. So, Father, today we lift up our city, our state, and our nation, and we thank you, God, that you are imputing the minds and hearts and controlling the hearts of those that's to make the decisions concerning the city of Mobile. God, we thank you for this council. We thank you for those that's in authority. And, God, we thank you that you said if we had the mind of Christ, that you would keep us in perfect peace. So, we pray for peace now. We pray for unity, and we bind up division and hatred. And we'll give your name all the praise on and glory for what you're about to do in our midst today. And it's in Jesus' matchless name we do pray. We call it done by faith. Amen.
If I could have just your attention, and this is to honor somebody that normally, so I'm taking a lot of liberty, but because normally we recognize either a national figure or someone who lives in our community in Mobile. But my brother passed away, and I would create a moment of silence in his honor. Thank you. If you, none of you knew him, but if you did, you'd love him as much as me. His name is Lee Casper. Please keep his family in your prayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rich, and we certainly extend our heartfelt thoughts and prayers and condolences to you and to family in the loss of your brother.
Roll call, President Manzi.
Here.
Vice President Small.
Here.
Councilmember Richardson.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Rich.
Here.
Councilmember Gregory.
Here.
Statement of rule.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We first would ask that you turn off and on silence all the electronic devices before entering the council meeting. Any person desiring to address the council must sign in indicating the resolution, ordinance, appeal, or public hearing agenda item before entering the council meeting. Rest in the council, the speaker must state clearly for the record her name and address. Any person desiring to speak to the council on a non-agenda item must contact the city clerk's office on the Thursday preceding the Tuesday in which you'd like to speak by 2:00 p.m. The subject he or she wishes to address the council on must be identified and pertaining to the city of Mobile business. Any person who hasn't given the proper notice to clerk's office will not be granted the opportunity to address the council. Speakers are allowed five minutes to make their presentation. A bell will sound to indicate the end of four minutes. One minute remains for summarizing. The second bell indicates that all of your time has expired. When addressing the council, there is to be no personal address to any individual council member. All statements are to be made to myself, who serves as the chair, and I will recognize any council member who wishes to respond. To maintain decorum, there will be no undue applause and or public outcry allowed. Those are the rules for this particular meeting. We are appreciative of your interest in your municipal government.
Approval of minutes of June 9th.
Some move.
The property moved in second in the discussion. Good job. Thank you for the thorough job with our minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Communications from the mayor's office.
There appears to be no communication and no one to communicate. Now, Mr., we do have a proclamation.
Yes, sir. I have a proclamation to read.
Yes, sir.
The proclamation reads, "Whereas Juneteenth is a historic and joyous occasion for our great country and its citizens, as it is a celebration of the most fundamental truth that all people are created equal and have been endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, including those of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And whereas it is on this date, June 19th, that we commemorate the arrival of Major General Gordon Granger of the United States Army in Galveston, Texas, in 1865, and the issuance of General Order Number Three, which declared that all caves in Texas are free. And whereas with this, President Abraham Lincoln's Emancipation Proclamation, originally delivered two whole years earlier, finally resulted in the freeing of thousands of Africans and their descendants who until then had remained enslaved. And whereas, while we celebrate this momentous occasion, we must also acknowledge the ongoing challenges African-Americans have faced in the country in the 155 years since then. Whereas with this acknowledgement comes also an opportunity for us all to recommit that we will do whatever we can to ensure the rights and freedoms of life, liberty, and happiness for all citizens. Nowfore, we, the members of the Mobile City Council, do hereby proclaim this Friday, June 19th, 2020, as Juneteenth Day in Mobile, and urge all our citizens to join in celebrating the freedom and rights of all Americans and commit ourselves to our role in always ensuring those rights and freedoms. Done at the city of Mobile, Alabama, this 15th day of June 2020."
Amen.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. We are appreciative of your reading that resolution today.
Adoption of the agenda.
Some move.
Second.
The property moved in second in the discussion. If not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda is adopted.
Appeals. We have requests for the noise ordinance on June 20th in Joe Bailey Park and at the corner of Hall Smith Mill Road and McVeigh Drive.
And?
Oh, July 4th, 11th, 18th, and 25th, from 7:00 a.m. until 7:00 p.m. in Langen Park and Beenville Square. Let's take those together. I'll take the other separate.
You want to make that condition?
Some moved with the stipulation that the clerk will make sure that Mr. Pope and Mr. Pope has obtained a permit from the city for the discussions in the park he wants to have.
Second.
Probably moved in second in the discussion.
I just want to make it clear, if you wouldn't mind, Mr. President, that the condition for all of these waivers, the noise ordinance, is that he must receive and be in possession of all permits that are required to operate where he is attempting to operate, whether or not that's right of way, park, or otherwise. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. President.
Mr. Gregory.
The email that I received from Shonda Smith, who is the director of our Parks and Recreation Department, she said that Mr. Pope does not have a reservation at Langen Park, and he will need to have a park reservation in order to preach wherever he is going to set up. Ms. Merchant spoke with him this morning. He was not aware that he needed that. He also mentioned that his preaching would not be all day long, probably like from noon until 3:00. And I know that President Manzi has requested that the pastor come next week and just, you know, chat with us to let us know what he's doing, because he is going around the city to various areas to do this. And so, in some respects, we just like to meet the man who is making this effort. And I think he understands where we're coming from, but just in order to do everything officially and legally, he will need to have his reservation at the park, and he is aware of that now. So, yes, if we can just approve this conditionally, I'm fine with that.
I'm totally in favor. Any further discussion?
I have a question.
Ms. Rich?
Do you want to adjust the hours, or are you going to leave it 7:00 to 7:00 as listed for, even though it might be shorter? I guess we could amend it next weekend when you talk to him.
Yeah, once we hear from him, and, you know, maybe we can adjust it and find out why he wanted it from 7:00 a.m. until 7:00 p.m.
Well, Langen Park might not be as contentious. The other is near a hotel.
Yeah.
And, you know, guess that depending on how loud he was getting, if we're going to give him the loudness, which is what we're giving him, that could be disturbing for 12 hours.
Well, I'm hopeful that we'll be able to come to the meeting on next week.
Okay, I just didn't know if you wanted to now limit it, but I guess you could amend it.
We have a little lineup.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Requests for a waiver of noise ordinance on June 27th from 4:00 p.m. until 7:00 p.m. on Donald Street.
Some move. Second.
The property moved in second in the discussion. If not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council, Justice Washington.
Good morning.
Oh, I had to say my name first.
Yes, sir. Your name and your address, if you mind.
Okay. My name is Justice Washington, and my address is 3880 Lee Drive, 36693, Mobile, Alabama. I speak now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Good morning, members of Mobile City Council and outstanding citizens. My name is Justice Washington, better known by my moniker, MBK Spurway. I come to here today as a spokesperson elected by the people to convey a message of struggling and strive against racial injustice, systematic slavery, and, most importantly, organized ignorance. I ask you, what are the conditions whereby men and women can come together function on a level that is defined as civilized? If you can't answer that question, then you should know the opposite of that answer is ignorance. We, as a people, on both sides are ignorant. The ignorance of the people has allowed them to be systematically oppressed, and the ignorance of the lawmakers and enforcers has caused them to believe that they are invincible with no repercussions for their heinous actions. For nearly 500 years, we have been fighting for change, and even though new laws have been passed, the treatment of black people has stayed the same because ignorance has yet to be eradicated. A snowball of racial insensitivity endorsed by our president has rolled down a mountain of ignorance, causing people of color to be crushed under a constitutional avalanche where a physical assault is applauded and free murder is a social norm, not just of today, but in the general before us as well. We, the citizens of Mobile, Alabama, are completely disappointed and utterly disgusted by the actions and endorsements of Sheriff Sam Cochran and Police Chief Lawrence Batiste, who have the audacity to stand in front of news cameras and bash people who are innocent until proven guilty, ruining lives and reputations only for charges to be later dropped. But under that same token, they refuse to keep that same energy in front of those same cameras when it's time to speak out against deliberate police misconduct, which gets a slap on the wrist due to the brotherhood of the badge. We have peaceful protesters rightfully arrested and subsequently fired from their jobs due to large, inaccurate, and irresponsible journalism by Fox 10 news reporters. Even with the grounds for a pain and suffering lawsuit against the city, the protesters declined to file out of fear for their safety of their families. One ain't even told me that he didn't want to end up, and I quote, "Another dead nigger." What kind of country do we live in where our citizens fear the repercussions of public servants with badges than they fear God? If the people can't find a safe haven against police in the justice system, then maybe we should bring the police to the citizen system. On behalf of the people, I propose that a person in the board is dismantled immediately and replaced with a citizens board ran by trusted members that will hold police accountable for unjust actions. We propose that all police officers should attend mentor racial equality workshops, as well as conflict resolution classes, and that murder of any unarmed citizen by law enforcement should be a federal crime with a minimum sentence of 25 years to life. We propose the MPD be defunded and their former beds be put towards free cleanse for mental health in all predominantly black neighbors of my city, and that deliberate police misconduct should not only result in immediate termination, but that criminal charges of perjury should be filed against that officer for telling a lie under sworn oath to protect and serve, because murder is not protection, and brutality is a disservice to the victim and the witnesses. To anyone who opposes my views, I challenge your logic with this question. If the word of a sworn officer is held in highest regards, so much so that with little to no evidence, his testimony alone can possibly send an innocent man to prison, then why is that same officer, under that same oath, not held to the highest level of accountability for his partake in criminal mischief? The fact that the risk and reward of the oath is not equilibrium proves that the justice system is only a governmental sham that does not and never has coincided with any definition or any sentence or the word we call justice. In school, they taught us it was four seasons, fall, winter, spring, and summer, but what they never taught us about was election season. So, a message to my black people, don't be swayed by these false claims of pro-blackness by these politicians and corporations. They only want our votes, and they only want our dollar, and they don't deserve neither. Success in our community depends solely on the individual's consciousness of right and wrong. We must consciously struggle and strive against the elements of life that are downright inhumane, and we must understand that we cannot change the conditions of our city, state, county, country, government, whatever, until we change conditions within ourselves. Our president is an ignorant bigot who uses politics to line his own pockets, and the fact that he has a rally in Mobile should show you exactly how our mayor Sandy feels about us.
Mr. Washington, that's your five time, five minutes.
That's good.
Well done. We've heard you, and there's discussion on this council relative to having a special call council meeting to discuss issues as it involves with the police. We have that time and date to disseminate in very short order. We take the mood and the moment we're in very seriously, and we want to make certain that we can prevent any further incidences here that have occurred nationally from coming here. We want to hear. We want to understand. We want to be able to ascertain the thoughts, and then we also want the community to know where the police department is as it relates to protocols, procedures, and policies. So, that date for that meeting, we'll decide on it very shortly and get it disseminated out. Special meetings are quite rare amongst members of the council. We don't do that, but we recognize where we are and where we need to go. We want to make certain that the public, as well as our law enforcement, can have an official opportunity through this legislative body to have a discussion. So, thank you. Your time has elapsed, but thank you for coming down. Mr. President. Mr. Richardson, and then Mr. Williams.
I guess it was six months or so ago, I invited Chief Batiste to one of my meetings, and I announced that he was coming. And I had a large group of citizens at meetings, and they, and they lodged complaints against the police department. I guess 15 to 20 of them complained about misconduct on the part of the police office, how they were treated. And the chief asked them, "Do you file a report?" Not one of them filed a report. The chief said, "When I got to looking at the record on how many people complained about the police department, it was less than 10. Yet I see 20 people with their hands up." So, I'm glad this young man is here, and I hope the public is listening. The first step toward accountability is to report the infraction. Silence gives consent. If the police, last week, we had so many people that was arrested that alleged abuse here to talk to us last week, and I told them, "We can do something about it. Submit that to us in writing. Write me, put it in writing what has happened to you. We can get the brother cameras. We can see what happened to you." You know how many people wrote me? Not one.
How do I get in contact with you, sir?
The lady sitting right here, ready?
Ms. Fowler, is she in?
This is what I'm saying, to the general public, to everybody that's listening, we're not going to ever get it right. This business, this is the police, when they go into some communities, they act differently when they are in other communities, I agree, because in some of those communities, they will turn them in. Into the other community, they take the abuse and go and tell other folks what they did. They do not go and file a report. The only way to get accountability is to don't take nothing. If you feel like that the conduct of the police officer was not what it should have been, turn him in so we can get him off the force. But when you look at the police record, nobody turned anything in on him. We're not going to dismiss that officer. He has no record of doing anything. Turn them in if you want us to do something.
Thank you, Mr. Washington. And Ms. Fowler is right. She has all of our contact information, and we'd love to continue the dialogue.
I also want him to know that on July 14th, we're going to have a Public Safety Committee meeting right here at 1:00 on July 14th. On public, wherever you want to say, bring it on. We're going to be open and in business. Okay.
Mr. President.
Yes.
First of all, I want to also just, Mr. Washington, I think you prepared real remarks, and I know that, you know, some things in there that you said that were general, I don't share the opinion that all politicians are just in it for a vote, and I would think that majority of this council will differ as well and will be right in differing. I believe that your argument is strong. I absolutely agree that there must be accountability, but I think your argument will be stronger if you don't call out individuals. It's not necessary. We know who you're talking about when you just simply talk about the issues. But thank you for being here.
Mr. President, let me, I don't go too much. Can I have a comment?
Mr. Richardson?
A true way to judge your elected officials is when you ask them to do something that they have the ability to do, and they don't do anything. My motto is, "If you ring, I will spring." You check with the people in District 1 to see if they tell you, "I asked Councilman Richardson, and he didn't do nothing." No. I'm taking it to the max. If you ring, I'll spring. These other councilmen have done the same thing. Judge us by what you ask us to do, that we had the ability to do it, we failed to do it.
Thank you again, Mr. Washington. We appreciate you coming down.
James Williams.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I appreciate this opportunity to speak to the council this morning. My name is James Williams. I live at 2504 Combs Street here in Mobile, and I've lived here all of my life. I'm 70-some years old. I've served in the military. I worked as a state trooper here in this state for 20-some years. And I'm here this morning to talk about police use of force. I've had a number of people to approach me and ask my opinion as it relates to force that policemen use. My opinion is that as long as they are using excessive force, they are not putting your life in danger. You can plot. If you're in a situation where a law enforcement officer is putting your life in danger, you have been restrained, you're laying down on the ground, and they're putting your life in danger, those that see this, they have a moral and a spiritual and a patriot obligation to stop it, to stop it. That officer is no longer an officer at that point. He is a criminal. And a code needs to be initiated with the city that states that when a subject is in custody, when he stops resisting, at that point, you stop beating him or whatever you're doing, and if not, you're going to be held accountable. I hear the voices of young people. I hear the voices of older people. I have a son. He works over jobs. He's in and out, and he has filed complaints to me about what has happened to him. I have filed complaints with the police chief in writing. I have sent him certified letters not pertaining to this particular situation, and I haven't heard anything back from him. I've written letters to the mayor regarding situations that I have had here with law enforcement officers. I haven't heard anything back from him. But I wrote a letter to the governor. Within a few days, I got a reply back from her and who I needed to talk to, as well as my representative and the FBI. And it's a shame that you live here in a city, and some of your officials don't pay any attention to what you're seeing. You got to go to other agencies to get things done. It's my responsibility to hold officials accountable. They are taxpayers, and if they are not doing their job, it's my responsibility to make sure that they do it. And I pledge from here forth that I'm going to do that. But I wanted to come before the council this morning and express how I feel, and I'll be back, and I appreciate the opportunity that y'all gave me to come and speak this morning. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Vice President.
Mr. Williams, you said that you had written the police chief and the mayor, and no response whatsoever?
Yes, sir. I have certified letters that I have sent to them on different occasions. I have went to the police office here on Government Street to fill out a form that you used to get an appointment to see the chief, and I never got a response. And when I would call, I would be given an explanation that he's busy, and this has happened several times. And like I explained to the committee, I have sent certified letters to the mayor, and I haven't gotten a response back. But when I wrote to the governor, that's when I started getting responses and getting pointed in the direction that I needed to be to resolve the situations that I had in the FBI.
Let me ask you another question. When you was writing the chief and also the mayor, was it dealing with the same situation as far as your son? Did I hear that correctly?
I just mentioned that particular situation, but the situation is that my correspondence was directed regarding situations that took place with me. And one of them was very serious. If I hadn't been prior law enforcement and restrained myself the way that I did, the situation could have very well escalated to something that would not have been nice.
In the situation that happened to you, did you report that to Attorney Affairs at the Police Department?
It was not the Police Department here in Mobile. That was another police agency. But I wanted to go through the Police Department here because the immediate supervisor of the person that I had the confrontation with wouldn't respond to me. So, I started with the police chief here to see if he could give me assistance, and from there, I went to the mayor, and then, like I was explaining, I went to the governor, and that's when I started to get resolutions regarding the problem that I had. And that's when I started to get resolution regarding the problem that I had.
Wh- wh- the incident happened at?
It happened at the, the cruise terminal here in Mobile.
At the cruise terminal?
Yes.
And this was done by, I mean, was it?
One of the Homeland Security officers.
Homeland Security, okay.
Just, just a clarification. So the incident you're referring to at the cruise terminal, uh, happened with someone in law enforcement at the cruise terminal? Was it an MPD officer? Is that?
Ma'am, it was not an MPD officer.
It was a Homeland Security officer?
It was a Homeland Security officer. But I needed the assistance of Mobile Police Department because the Homeland Security officer supervisor would not respond to meet with me or discuss the issue. So therefore, as it relates to going up a chain of command, I started here with my local police department and then with the mayor. And then like, like I was explaining, when I talked, when I correspond with the governor, then I was able to be directed where I needed to go to get the appropriate action done.
So that's what you really needed, was someone to talk with you and help you figure out who you really needed to be getting with, like the governor did with the FBI? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
But I felt that the Police Department here should have given me the assistance that I needed at that particular time, or at least correspond with me if they could not have done anything. That case, as well as another situation that I had, that the police chief failed to respond to my request. And the mayor didn't, didn't respond either. And both of them, I sent them certified letters and I sent a certified copy to my councilman as well as to the FBI.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming down.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen of the Mobile City Council. My name is Antonio Moore. My address is six zero seven two Highlands Circle three six six zero eight. And Ms. Rich is my county councilman. Um, I was here today to talk about the, the task force that the Obama administration came up with about a couple of years ago from the Department of Justice. And it, it had guidelines that cities, local governments, local police departments, and the civilians themselves can do to improve the law enforcement opportunities and the safety of the community for everyone involved. I already spoke with Chief Batista. He spoke with me this past Tuesday, this past Thursday for about a little bit over an hour now. And I already got some insights on him about what the Police Department can do in the future to help the community better. And I went with Ms. Rich this past Friday for over an hour about some of the things that I was gonna discuss with you today. In the task force, um, it had, in the task force booklet, it had came up with five things local governments can do. And one of them was the inappropriate civilian oversight board for the community. Um, Ms. Rich said that under ordinance zero nine dash zero four four, that the city council had already once created a advisory board for this, for the police departments. I spoke with Chief Batista about that and he said that, that the people on the board were doing what they were supposed to do, but some of them didn't wanna do the training, some of them didn't wanna show up. And he also mentioned that sometimes they would come to the board and say, hey, the Police Department are doing what they're supposed to do, but the board, it wasn't fitting the narrative of what they wanted to do, like what the board wanted. So it kinda just fell to the wayside. I was here to talk, talk about trying to restart this committee and the review board, an advisory board for the city. Phoenix, Arizona recently just created its own civilian review board for the Police Department, and it works in tangent with the Phoenix, Arizona Police Department. Both, like, the way I understood it to work from the research I did was the, if a citizen has a complaint, or even a police officer has a complaint, and they don't really wanna go to Internal Affairs or the Police Department, they can report it to the civilian review board. The civilian review board has the power given to them by the city council to do their own investigations and get documents and review it. But the ultimate decision about what happens comes from the police chief himself. So not an oversight from directly from the city council. Police chief is still in charge. It just puts it in the hands, hands of civilians as well. And also the work, it works in tangent with the Police Department. So say for instance, if a civilian wanted to report something to the civilian board, the civilian board can review it, but they will have to share that information with Internal Affairs as well. And also vice versa, if they wanna just say, I'm gonna go to the Internal Affairs, that they will have to share it with the civilian review board as well. So each one can have information on separate investigation. Once investigations are done, ultimately it goes to the chief of police. And the chief of police can use that information aside what appropriate action needs to be taken. And I discussed this with Ms. Rich. I said, one problem you could arise with is that, say for instance, the civilian review boards were recommending information and they constantly get shot down and it goes to Internal Affairs. That can be something that the review board can then bring to the city council and say, hey, for example, hey, look, we've got multiple complaints about this officer and nothing is being done. So it looks like they're kinda protecting this officer or, and it's gross misconduct, it's misconduct. And it's like they're protecting this officer. So city council, could you investigate it for us? Because ultimately, city council will have more power than the review board. And it sounded like a good idea on paper and I was just wanted to bring it to the review board. Like, I already discussed with my councilwoman, and I just wanted to discuss it with the whole city council to see, is there any way that the city can restart this advisory committee and give it those powers, if possible, to oversee, oversee alongside with Internal Affairs, police misconduct with the community? And it give it a safer outlet for the, the city of the city who don't necessarily trust the police to voice their concerns. That's it.
Thank you, thank you so much, Mr. Moore.
Mr. President, you wanna share with him, uh, the meeting you wanna have with the council?
Absolutely. Uh, the, the board, the citizens advisory commission, the ordinance that authorizes the creation of that is still in existence. Uh, it would be a matter of us as members of the council appointing new persons to serve in that capacity. Uh, we made those appointments, uh, three or four years ago, along with the council's push for the Police Department to secure body cameras. All of that discussion kinda was in the same context. Uh, one of the rich, one of the reasons why it was not quite successful here in Mobile was there was some internal strife amongst the appointed persons, uh, on both extremes. And also, uh, getting the word out that the commission was meeting was you. I held several other commission meetings in my council district, in churches and community centers. And a lot of times, it would be me, the pastor of the church, and the members of the commission. And so, uh, I think the, the willingness to, uh, even amongst law enforcement, when you talk with the Public Safety Director and with the police chief, the willingness to reconstitute the commission is there. We've just got to make certain that we have the, the right persons with the right, uh, agendas and that the community is aware that this is a conduit that they can utilize in order, uh, to gain, uh, as the other gentleman was speaking, in order to gain some help with an, an issue you might be having with the Police Department. Uh, and, and so what we've advised, what we've come up with, in addition to the, uh, Public Safety Committee meeting that Mr. Richardson will hold, we will be holding in very short order, a special call council meeting to deal just with matters of this nature as with the community and the police. Uh, the, the Public Safety Director this morning advised me that there were about eight items that are, that are hot items nationally that he wanted to address. He wanted the community to be aware as to what's the policy protocol and proceed with the city of Mobile. So this will be a very public discussion. The only item on the agenda will be the community and policing in our community. Uh, it'll be open to the public. Law enforcement will be here so that all persons who would like to offer commentary and who would like to hear where we are as a community will have that opportunity.
Okay, um, what date? I, I know there's one on July the fourteenth, but is the one you're planning on doing on a different date than July the fourteenth?
It will be on a different date. We, we just, uh, kinda committed to, to holding the meeting so that information will be disseminated as, as possible. We haven't confirmed the date yet, but we will and we'll make certain that it is publicly, publicly announced so that all persons interested can be here.
Okay. All right. And one other thing, um?
I, I, I'm sorry, Mr. Moore. I believe your time might have ran out. And I'm not picking on you. I'm, I'm charged with, with keeping order. Everybody's given the five minutes and I think you, you might have utilized them. But if you wanna contact us directly, you certainly welcome to.
All right. I just gonna, was gonna ask a question, if that's possible, just one more, one more question. I'm not gonna do a statement or anything. I just wanna ask one question.
Well, yeah, I'm, I'm short of your time. I got to hold everybody to the five minutes, Mr. Moore.
Okay.
If I could comment real quickly?
Sure.
I, I did enjoy our conversation and was pleased that, uh, Mr. Moore was able to meet with our chief and his interest in, um, revitalizing the community, um, entity that the council had approved back a number of years ago. And the breakdown was that there were some that did not wanna take the police course and, and I, and I had, that's still something that's part of this because people have to really understand what the police guidance is and what laws they function under as well. But I thank you very much for your interest and hope that you'll stay engaged and be part of the community dialogue on what's very, very essential for good policing in any community.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Rich.
Thank you very much. And he is holding the ordinance, by the way. So any changes or any things that you'd like to see, if you wanna get that to council, you can probably draw lines through the current one where you'd like to see those improvements.
Mr. President.
Ms. Richardson?
I'd get this point, uh, this council need to throw a repurposing that ordinance, finding out what did work and what didn't work. One thing didn't work is a lot of folk didn't wanna ride. You say you got to ride with the police. They, 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 a lot of folk were not interested in, in riding with the police. Some of those people had already been a police officer. And they say, I've been a police officer. I don't need to ride, but you, you could unless you ride. So I think we need to look at all that we, it, it's, they're not trying to find out as much as they can about what, how the police work. This committee is trying to resolve issues between the police and the community. That's what they're trying to do. And you can ride all night and we have nothing to do with what the police gonna do the next night with somebody. Ain't gonna do nothing like you riding. So we need to take a look at some of these things that we are requiring that got to go to the shooting range. We don't need to put nothing in there. We need to take all of that stuff, what they got to do with the police. That's what, you know, it, it's all aimed at the things that they have to do with the police in order to serve. We need to look at re, represent that entire committee. And I think they'll, 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 they'll be ready to go.
Yes, sir. Thank, thank you, yes, sir. We appreciate your time and appreciate you coming down.
All right, ladies and gentlemen of the council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cedric Miles? Please ask the switch.
Mr. Miles?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Cedric Miles, Team Twelve, Forest Cove Drive, Mobile, Alabama, three six six one Basically, I just have a couple of comments about the, uh, march that protest that took place on, uh, May thirty-first. And if any of the protesters are here, I'd like to thank them. Uh, because I really thought, I grew up in the sixties, seventies. I was an adult in the eighties. So I thought, uh, I thought they had become complacent. But I see now that they're not complacent. And I just wanna say that I'm proud of them. And one of the reasons I'm, one reason that I'm really proud of them is because, and I hope I don't hurt anybody's feelings, but they took the statue of that traitor down. Without that, uh, without the protest, Raphael Sims would still be look, overlooking us. And people tend to forget that men like Raphael Sims actually fought against the United States. So they were not for, for the United States being a United States. So I, I wanna thank the, the young man that, uh, that threw the paint on it. I didn't agree with him throwing the paint on it, but the result was good. And so, and another thing I'd like to, I, and I, and I'd like to thank the mayor for, for taking it down. And, uh, but my main question here was, uh, before the, before protests, there were two men that were there to stop the protest. And they were there with guns. And I know that thirteen people got arrested that day. And I'm just, well, the news said that they were there with guns. I didn't see it. That's what was on the news. And, uh, I'm, I just, I would just like to know if they were two of the thirteen that were arrested that day? And if they weren't arrested, why weren't they arrested? Because those who were arrested really caught a hard time from the system after they, after they were incarcerated, I guess you could say, for, it was for just a couple of days, but it shouldn't have been for that long. And I just wanna know if those two men were included.
Mr. President.
Mr. Williams?
First of all, thank you, Ms. Miles, for coming down. The, um, it is unlawful to participate in a protest with firearms. And when we asked the question this morning of the Public Safety Director, the very direct question, or the very direct question was answered very directly in that there were several individuals that were asked to take their weapons and secure them. And to, if they wanted to, uh, didn't wanna do that, then they were asked to leave. All voluntarily, uh, took their weapons and secured them and that there was no, nobody arrested for possession of firearms during that time.
Well, why would they bring a firearm to an event like that?
I can't, um, attest to the, uh, to the motive of any individuals. I think you can't either. Uh, but in this case, the, the, the attempt was by the police at any opportunity to peacefully resolve all conflict. And in this case, they were asked to voluntarily take their weapons elsewhere and they did.
So there's no law against bringing a weapon to a protest?
There is. Yes, sir.
There is, as, as, um, there is a law. And as, as there is with a lot of things, when the police encounter folks and ask them to, to do otherwise and they voluntarily comply, um, the, the decision was to allow that and, and move on peacefully. And that's the way it ended.
But obviously, they didn't come for peace. But I'll, I'll accept your answer. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Keandre Davis. Uh, my address is fifty-three seven five five Timberline Ridge, three six six nine three, Mobile, Alabama. And I come here before you, Mr. President, to speak upon mental health. So according to my personal experience and, you know, as an average teen in Mobile, it's not easy. You going through these different phases of life and I would like to appreciate this time that we face now. You know, it's a lot of animosity. It's a lot of anger. Everybody playing the blame game. You know what I'm saying? I don't wanna do that. So as I speak about mental health, I wanna, um, you know, growing up, we watched so many people give up along the way, high school, community college. They turned their back, you know, they had nobody to guide them, to proper lead them, you know what I'm saying? So that leads to thoughts of depression, aggression, you mad at it, girl, you know what I'm saying? So, um, I just wanna put in to the air, you know what I'm saying, that I feel like programs that Success for the Future offer can help create an atmosphere, you know, to, uh... to, uh, help people, you know, to go through those things on a daily basis, Mr. President. And I was wondering, is there any way that we can set up, um, a meeting between you, Mr. Um, President Manzi, so that we can discuss some things, you know?
Uh, Mr. Davis?
Yes, sir.
I, I have absolutely no issue with meeting with you and meeting with the leader of Success For The Future. Uh, I've had those interactions over the last four years, I know. Uh, the, the, what really wants to, what, Mr. and what Success For The Future needs is a meeting with the persons who decide the city's budget, so that they might have the opportunity, uh, to be included, not included, as the mayor presents his budget.
Yes, sir.
And I've advised, uh, Mr. Hill of that. I have written letters on his behalf, and on the organization's behalf.
Yes, sir.
So that the persons who would make those decisions could engage with Mr. Hill. And I'm certainly willing, as, as a matter of fact, uh, Ms. Steinfels, if you could, uh, I don't want today to conclude without us drafting another letter, uh, asking that Ms. Stimson and the Deputy Director and the Police Chief and also Jamie Roberts with Community and Neighborhood Development engage and reach out to Mr. Hill to see whether or not the tenants of his program would work in simpatico with, uh, the program that, uh, the Chief and the Public Safety Director and the mayor has relative to this city. And I want to make sure that Mr. Hill and Mr. Davis get copies of that letter. I want that done today, please. And so, to answer your question, I'm fully willing to facilitate any meetings necessary.
Yes, sir.
But the decisions relative to funding are initiated with the administration.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
I've, I've seen the word, word, aspects of Success For The Future. I believe you are a participant in the program, and the way that you've been able to come down and so eloquently articulate your support is, is, is a cool toe to the program. I am absolutely willing, uh, to be a facilitator and see whether or not those meetings can take place.
Yes, sir, I do believe that we have the best solution, you know, many program participants that do, um, multiple program, programs through Success For The Future, they, um, have outstanding test scores, you know, they, they examine growth, they go through, you know, a lot of things so that they can prosper to their high potential, because leaders, you know, in the city don't give them opportunity to do that, you know, I truly believe that, you know, people, especially the youth, are a product of their environment, and I believe that they do deserve the atmosphere of Success For The Future to have their environment.
Yes, sir. Thank you, appreciate you coming down.
Reggie Hill.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Members of the council, in the absence of our mayor and the executive directors, to those members of the administration that are in attendance, and to the citizens and stakeholders of the city of Mobile, good morning, Reggie Hill, excuse me, 1007 Center Street. Um, before I begin, I would like to express my condolences to council member Rich, my presence with you and your family. Um, also, would I like to share for those individuals who have come and spoke about these issues that were, that were fed a regarding police, please go back and review the June the 2nd, 2020 video of this very meeting. You will hear how we can go to the municipal code, that is the only way these issues will be changed, and I hope that that's the conversation that we'll begin having within this chamber regarding policing issues in our city. And I rise today to discuss a few items that are on the agenda, as well as a letter that I received from the Mobile City Council on June the 3rd, uh, 2020. Um, the items that I want to discuss first, Mr. President, will you allow us to understand what exactly those allocations will be for, for Resolution 60447, that's the uses of funds for our ACDC?
Say that again, ma'am?
Say that again.
The uses of funds, that's, uh, Resolution 60 dash 447, ACDC.
That, that request was put in probably about five or six weeks ago. I don't have that paperwork right in front of me, but I can make sure you get a copy of it.
Okay, so I just want to make that evident that, you know, it's on here for approval, and a citizen is required, my second, um, question is regards to ordinance 08422. Uh, may we have the clarification on the definition of radiation detection? And, uh, what relation does this have to 5G tower implementation in City of Mobile? I've asked this question about seven or eight weeks ago, uh, to the council, I've written to the council, written to the administration, haven't received a response. You see this on here today, where resources are being allocated towards it, so, um, is there any type of clarification that could be made on that definition, radiation detection, and if there's, if there's any relations to 5G towers being implemented here?
For the hazmat unit.
Right, I, I would, I'm not going to hazard a guess, because I'm not the subject matter, nobody's, is, is, uh, Mr. Payne in the audience?
No.
I don't see Mr. Payne. And I don't see anyone from the administration that I can call on to answer this particular question.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll move on to my, uh, to my third question.
Yes, sir.
On, I believe that's ordinance 08 dash 429, we're getting ready to spend about $31,000 for video equipment, so that you can have, uh, bond hearings. Also, resort back to the June the 2nd, uh, presentation to this body, where we can implement something that's reflective of the 14th Amendment to the US Constitution, which is actually identified in Chapter 38 of the Mobile Municipal Code, where we can implement signature bonds, particularly to those individuals who are nonviolent offenders. So we're wasting all this additional money talking about we want to have the bond hearings, where this was implemented within the code, and we hold those people accountable, there's a balance on both sides. I would hope that if someone, someone is in that signature bond, that they will not commit additional crimes in between that time before them and going to the court, and that will have more reason to even give a more egregious sentence. So these are kind of things we need to look at, and we want to save those resources, because that 31K can go to the performance contracts that might prevent some of these things we're seeing within the city. So the fourth, um, thing before I get into the letter, uh, that I wanted to address was Resolution 03015, and that's, um, in relation to the, uh, removal of the term race. Now, excuse me, I've had many conversations about this idea, and I can be corrected, and I'm, I'm actually at, at three minutes according to, to my wife, but I can be corrected. Um, I believe the sentiments of the person who presented this, uh, was in the idea that for many years, people who've identified themselves by race have been denied certain things, whether it's been housing, uh, jobs, educational opportunities, loans, whatever the case may be. But if we replace that with ethnicity, I believe we're opening the door to do the exact same thing. So I would like to see if, where we can just remove the idea altogether, and we can look at people as being people. In college, they give you ID numbers, they post your grades outside on the door, and they have that number so you can identify. There's some way that we can get to this, if we're doing all this digital stuff, where that can be, and people won't be having to, uh, be judged because of their skin or, and or background. Um, finally, I received a letter on June the 3rd, it says, "Dear Mr. Hill, the Mobile City Council is committed to conducting our meetings with decor, to ensure that everyone is treated with respect. While we understand and appreciate your passion for the issues which you address week after week," I really liked that part, "the council felt your demeanor at yesterday's meeting was disrespectful. I urge you to abide by the council rules and refrain from such behavior in the future." Now, the timing is different from what I've calculated here, so I'm going to be respectful to this chamber, if I need to come back, I will do that, but this is something that is infringing upon my first amendment right.
Was, was that the five minutes? According to our time to keep it.
That's what I just said, I'm, I'm going to respect the chamber, and that's what respect I did, was I don't think we have time to really understand it, we'll define this next week, so we can, we can.
But we look forward to you coming back next week and any other week that you'd like to participate.
I, I did just look over the, the contract on this fire, um, contract, it's fire supplies for swabs and tubing and things that, when they, they go to a hazmat, they have to sample and get it verified, so they know how to respond, and it's, um, I mean, we can send you the contract and you can read it for yourself, but it's basically their things that they have in the unit for their response, to know what it is they're dealing with.
Well, if we could make sure that Mr. Hill has a copy of that, that'd be something we appreciate. Val Madell Jackson.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, Val Madell Jackson, 1552 J. Drive, Mobile, Alabama, 36605. I'm here on the issue of race. May I speak to black America? God had brought you out of slavery. God has brought you out of slavery with two blessings. The first blessing is that you have citizenship in this great nation. You should be thanking God for what he has already done for you. The enemy is using you, black America. The enemy has used you to elect a president who glorify evil by shining its light on the White House. Evil is using you, black America, to destroy our national security. The same people who are marching with you today are going to be the same people who will be breaking into your homes, because you will have no police officer who will risk his life to come to save you.
Mr. President, I think this is out of order, it has nothing to do with the ordinance that's being presented.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
You signed in to speak.
I, could I speak to black America?
Well, well, we don't, we don't have the authority to grant you that you're able to speak to all the black America, but you're speaking to this black American, and my point to you is, you signed in to speak relative to the tenants of the ordinance that Councilman Richardson has proposed about striking the word "race" from city documents. And so if you could, uh, and I'm not, uh, if you could, if you could limit your commentary to speaking on that ordinance, please.
The ordinance is race, right?
The ordinance deals with removing race and the, the, the world race, international demographic from city documentation. So if you had any commentary to offer on that, we're certainly be glad to listen to it.
Okay, if, if, can I sign up to speak on this? Would that be a topic I could speak, speak on, if I sign up?
Yes, ma'am, as long as you sign up before the Thursday preceding the Tuesday, in which you'd like to speak by 8:00 PM. And then your subject matter really needs to be pertinent to City of Mobile business.
I'm saying, could I speak on this if I sign up?
Not, not today, no, ma'am.
I mean, this, this topic, what I'm speaking to now, can I sign up, up to this topic to black America?
Well, see, it, black, no, ma'am.
No, ma'am.
Because black America isn't just in Mobile, it's all over America.
Well, you, black America is a pain to hear, right? Well, okay, okay. In honor of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.
Yes, ma'am.
It is not the color of your skin, it is the content of your character.
Yes, ma'am.
When I first came here, I thought I was coming to start a prayer meeting, but it's bigger than all of us. The world is coming to Mobile, Alabama. God is coming to Mobile, Alabama. So get ready.
Is she talking about Trump?
Yes, ma'am. I, I believe God is already here. If he's in our hearts, he's already here.
Thank you.
And so, we, we don't have, we've already invited him. And I know he's in me and he's in many of the citizens that live in this, in this great city. Ma'am, ma'am, see.
Is that it for speakers?
Oh, yes, we have one more.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, Leo Alexander, um, he's speaking regarding, uh, ordinance 02015.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, I was here last week, and I, uh, was given five minutes, thank you very, very much, uh, I think I'm supposed to introduce myself, Leo Alexander, my address, 6650 Cottage Hill Road, 36695. Now, um, to pick up from last week, the council member Richardson is proposing removing race and substituting that with ethnicity. Now, if we're just talking about white people, white people have ethnicities that range throughout Europe, you've got British, Italian, French, Portuguese, German, uh, the Dutch, Scandinavians, Danish, Swedes, Norwegians, et cetera. But when we're talking about black Americans, because of slavery, there is no other ethnicity other than black Americans. So when I hear this removing race, replacing it with ethnicity, who does that benefit? It doesn't benefit black people. We're still 13, 14% of the population, and we're about 50% of the population here in Mobile, Alabama. So who does it really benefit? But when I heard Mr. Richardson say, when he looks at his black skin, he sees he's a parasite, then it hit me. He has a problem with being called black. I don't, no. People I heard from since my testimony last week, none of them had a problem with being called black. Matter of fact, when we look at our black skin, we see strength, we see perseverance, and we see beauty, that has, has a scale of colors from butter yellow to ebony black, and we're all proud of that. So I ask this council, do you really want to vote on an ordinance, the parasite ordinance, sponsored by Richardson, something that's going to do nothing but be more divisive to our community? Or do you want to come together and say, "Look, we understand we have a history of problems in our community, and renaming them from race to ethnicity doesn't solve one of them." I ask you, do not support this ordinance, you do not want to be labeled as the council member who supported the parasite ordinance. It will only be detrimental to your political career, because hearing a black man speak about his skin color and calling it a parasite, I had a visceral reaction to that, because I love being black, and everybody I know in my community feels the same way. So I ask Mr. Richardson to remove that ordinance and not let's go on with this any further. Thank you much, Mr. President. I know, I, what's my time right now?
Because if, if, what is the time?
If I have time.
To, you have two more minutes.
Oh, good, so I can hold on to my two minutes and let anybody say what they want, and if I want to say something again, I can use those two minutes then, then, right?
No, sir, it doesn't work that way.
Say what you got to say.
Now, you have an opportunity to, to continue for two more minutes, and then you conclude the remarks, and then if anyone would like to, uh, offer any commentary from the council, they'll have that opportunity.
Okay, all right. So I'll reiterate from last week, there's a reason why race was put there. It was supposed to protect the percentage of opportunities, economic opportunities, to close the income gap between blacks and whites here in Mobile. There was also another reason why it was put there. We want to achieve, I, I think our mayor uses the term "one Mobile." Well, I, I can't speak for him, I was hoping he would be here today, because I like to hear a definition, his definition of one Mobile. And I don't think, think in Mobile where race is neutral. Yes, we want to achieve a colorblind society, but we're not there yet, as evident by the riots and protests in our streets across this country. We are not there yet, and what I'm doing, does that buzzer mean I'm done?
One minute.
One minute, okay. Speaking out against his ordinance is to say we are just, we haven't achieved that colorblind society that we hope to achieve. All municipalities should want to do what Richardson is proposing, to be race neutral, but since we aren't there, we need to say, "Wait a minute, let's pump our brakes, and let's just, just make equality the goal for right now." And I very seriously have problems with a gentleman who proposes such a move, knowing that we're not there yet, and then knowing that he looks at his skin color and seeing it being a parasite. That's a problem. Thank you, council.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Alexander.
Mr. President.
What, what wants to, Mr. Alexander, you can, do you, does anyone have any questions on Alexander? Any questions on this, this side of the, you can, you can have your seat, Mr. Alexander.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir, appreciate you coming down.
I'll take my seat outside, watch it on the monitor out there.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Rich?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, Mr. President. Uh, well, it will appear to me that, uh, Mr. Alexander did not understand what I said last week. Um, and it, 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 it does appear to me that he would like to remain in, in the, in the black race. He want to be in a black race. If, uh, he's, he's really getting down to what the heart of the matter is. If I ask Mr. Eric Alexander what it is that qualified him to be in the black race, you know what he probably would say? The color of his skin. He would say his blackness is what put him in the black race. What if his blackness is what put him in the black race? Is he going to claim black dogs? See, because the color is what getting, getting him in there. And if, and if I got this color, it's in my race. Would a black horse be in the race with him? What about a black cow? Surely a black cow going to be in the race because it's the, it's the color that's getting, that, 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 that placed him in his race. It was the color of his skin. What I said last week and what I wanted, everybody out there to understand this week is that color cannot exist on its own. No color. If, if I asked you to bring me black by itself, it's black, what could you bring? It cannot exist by itself. It has to exist on something else, meaning it's a parasite. It cannot exist on its own. White, black, no color can exist on its own. I see a black chair, but I see a chair. I can't bring you black by itself. I can't bring you white by itself. I can't bring you green by itself. Colors exist on something else, and whatever that color exists on, that's what's important. I have a gray car at home. The color of the car is not what's important, it's the car itself that's important. Now, I read, uh, uh, from the Dred Scott decision of eighteen fifty-one, eighteen fifty-seven, where the chief justice of the Supreme Court issued the opinion, Roger B. Taney. Dred was a man who left Mississippi, went to Illinois, and he was a black man. He went to Illinois as a free man. He moved back to St. Louis, they put him back in slavery. He went to court to say, you can't put me in slavery because I once was free. He's now standing before the Supreme Court, and, but the chief justice is going to go to the opinion, and he said that the Negro had more than a century before been regarded as a being of an inferior order, altogether to unfit, to associate with the white race, either in social or political relations, and so far inferior that they had no rights, which the white man was bound to respect, and that the Negro might justly and lawfully be reduced to slavery for his own good. That even if we set him free, he was so ignorant that he probably couldn't even bend for himself. That's how we got stuck in the black race, because they considered the black race to be inferior to everybody else. And there are those that say, and I still want to be in the black race. I still want to be regarded as inferior. Then they sort of planned in place to make sure that what this jury say came true. When I finished grade school, it was time for me to go to high school. Connecticut County had four high schools. I couldn't attend any of them. They bussed me to a current twenty school to make sure that I was inferior to everybody else. And that, that setting was supposed to trap me up so bad that I would not be able to go to a university and graduate. I graduated from New York City South Alabama with honors in political science, history. But let me tell you what the Bible say. I, I got, I got the floor, President. This is Acts seventeen twenty-six, and this getting down to the bottom of it. God has made a one blood, that's Adam. Adam believed, that's Adam. God has made a one blood, all nations of men, for to dwell on all the face of the earth. If in Germany, Adam is your daddy. If you're in Africa, Adam is your daddy. I don't care where you are. If you're living on the face of the earth and you're a human being, then Adam is the father. You can't have no two races of people, of humans. It is impossible for a member of one race to procreate with a member of another race. If I'm in a black race and you is some other race, we cannot reproduce children. Because when God made each animal, he said, each after its own kind, meaning you can procreate. I just showed Ms. Rich my DNA. I am twenty-nine percent Western Europe. I'm in the same race as the, that the, those people we claim are white race. We are, they in the same race I'm in. My great-granddaddy was a Davis out of Clark County. In the same race, all humans are in the same race. So why are you, are you asking what race I'm in? If I can stand upright, if I can walk, talk, laugh, reason, think, plan, write, read, I'm in the human race. Can no other animal, that's why they call us humans, because we're not beasts. Can't no beast do that? That's, that's the only reason they put to call us a human, because of our function, not because of the color of our skin. It's what we can do that other animals cannot do. And I'm here to tell you, I can do what any other person can do. And you would believe that after African-Americans invented the cell phone, GPS, the, the washing machine, the refrigerator, the air conditioner, the lawnmower, traffic light, helicopter, and on and on and on, that they erased this foolishness, that we're in some inferior separate from the white people. We are in the same race, and my second cousin went to that same inferior school. Ended up at the University of Chicago with a PhD. When they got ready to make the Alabama in nineteen fifty-three, they had, they had, uh, Dr. Albert Einstein, he, he got a MC square. They could not explode the atom bomb, and they moved the entire Manhattan Project to the University of Chicago. He helped them to, uh, uh, ex- explode the atom bomb. They dropped the atom bomb on Hiroshima and ended World War II. It's supposed to be inferior. Martin Daniel Taylor, Google his name, Dr. Martin Daniel Taylor. All I'm saying is this. They're marching all this country saying, it's time to stop racism. The only way to stop racism is end this racism, meaning a person in one race is mistreat somebody in the same, in another race. No, that's hate. There ain't no racism because we're all members of the same race. We are all members of the same race. And our clothes were Genesis one twenty-eight. When God made man, he finally spoke to man, he said, be fruitful and multiply and replenish the earth. Telling Adam, I want your offspring to replenish the earth. They have not replenished the earth. They don't, they don't all look alike. Some blacks, some whites, some brown, some dead, some other. They are all the children of Adam and Eve, and now they are pointing fingers at each other, saying, you ain't in this race. You ain't in this race, this, that, and other, but they're all children of Adam and Eve. We're all brothers and sisters all over this nation. There are no two races of human beings. Uh, we are homo sapiens. Go back and pick up your book. Our species is homo sapiens, all humans. It can't no homo sapien procreate with nobody but homo sapiens. The color does not define us. It does not add anything to us. It can't, can't help to do nothing, and it can't stop you from doing nothing. Thank you, Mr. President.
Ma'am, see the clerk?
Ordnance is, ordinance is held over, zero two zero one five. Ordnance eliminating and replacing the word "race" on City of Mobile official forms and documents.
Move to layover one week.
Thank you.
Probably moved in second in the discussion. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item is, is held over one week. There will be a committee meeting at one o'clock here in the auditorium of, of the Administrative Services Committee to further discuss this particular item.
Um, with that in mind, if there's no objection, I'll take the CIP resolutions held over and resolutions held over, uh, altogether.
No objection on mobile.
CIP resolutions held over, twenty-one four one six, authorized contract with Icah Construction Corporation for Hope Community Center Playground. Resolutions held over, zero one four one seven, authorized agreement with Cyber Investigations and Intelligence Agency for cybersecurity risk analysis. Zero one four one eight, authorized lease agreement with Dog River Marina and Boat Works for boat slip for fire department marine vessel. Twenty-one four one nine, authorized contract with Skipper Consulting for St. Joseph Street two-way conversion project design. Twenty-one four two zero, authorized contract with Kyle's Murphy Glover and Associates for engineering services, maintenance, dredging of channel at McNally Park. Twenty-one four two one, authorized contract with Delta Flooring for Harold L. Johnson Police Headquarters Administrative Offices Flooring and Painting. Zero eight four two two, approved purchase order to SafeWare for hazmat radiation detection response kits. Zero eight four two three, approved purchase order to product vendor for encrypted data recover software annual license. Zero eight four two four, approve item base bid with various vendors for industrial and safety supplies.
So moved.
Second.
We probably moved in second in the discussion. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Analysis passed.
Ordnance being introduced, fifty-seven zero one six through eighty-seven zero one seven.
Motion to, um, by these orders will be laid off for one week by council rules.
Consent resolutions being introduced, fifty-eight four four six through sixty-four four seven.
Motion to suspend the rules for a meeting consideration for consent resolution five eight four two six through sit zero dash four four seven. And with the session, yeah, with the session with zero eight dash four two nine.
Second.
Probably moved in second in the discussion. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Fifty-eight four two six and four two seven are declaring weeds not as and assessing cost for removal of weeds. Weed lean group sixteen oh four and sixteen oh three. Sixty-four two eight, determine an appropriation to the Ridgefield Property Owners Association, serves a public purpose and approved payment. Sixty-four four seven, determine an appropriation to the Africa Town Community Development Corporation, serves a public purpose and is an appointment.
So, second.
We probably moved in second in the discussion. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Analysis passed.
CIP resolutions being introduced, thirteen four thirty through twenty-one four thirty-three.
Motion to suspend the rule for a meeting consideration, um, from CIP resolution thirteen dash four thirty through twenty-one dash four thirty-three.
We probably moved in second in the discussion. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thirteen four thirty, approved change order number one for Baltimore Street, Street and Drainage Rehabilitation. Twenty-one four four three one, authorized contract with Watermark Design for Trinity Gardens Park improvements. Twenty-one four three two, authorized contract with Kimley Horn Associates for Sam Stotz Park Improvements Phase Two. Twenty-one four three three, authorized contract with WAS Design for Tricentennial Park Splash Pad Improvements.
Second.
We probably moved in second in the discussion. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Analysis.
Resolutions being introduced, zero one four three four through sixty-four four five.
Said resolution will be laid off for one week.
Call for public hearings, forty-one four four six, call for public hearings to resume property located at thirty-nine forty-five and thirty-nine forty-nine Government Boulevard and twelve fifty-one Azalea Road, southeast corner of Government Boulevard. Azalea Road from B two to B three, scheduled July fourteenth.
So moved.
Second.
We probably moved in second in the discussion. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Announcements.
Mr. Davis, Ms. Rich?
Uh, no, thank you.
Yeah, I would just like to say real quick that there are, are two, uh, items here, uh, for District one. One, one is dealing with the Doc Center and Trinity Gardens, where there's a lot of issues, uh, with the center itself that needs to be corrected, and, uh, we're going to spend the forty-four thousand, two hundred dollars is to go in and correct all of those items, and other than that, we're with Splash Pad. Uh, the first Splash Pad for the City of Mobile, uh, was, is this one over at the Tricentennial Park, and, uh, they're going to come in, do, do some improvements with the Splash Pad, Splash Pad to get, get it, uh, for the summer.
Is that conclusion?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Vice President?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, road closure, uh, will be happening this Thursday in District Three, uh, at Broad Street, Washington Avenue, and, uh, Baltimore Street for three weeks. Uh, there will be detours signs, uh, going up on tomorrow to direct traffic around this area. All this is, is being done with the revitalization of Baltimore Street, uh, replacing all the underground utilities. Uh, we're asking everyone that driving that, that area to please drive safe and also slow because many of the detours are going through the neighborhood where kids are being present. And speaking of, uh, Baltimore Street, we had to postpone our official groundbreaking ceremony a couple of weeks ago due to some unfortunate circumstances. But, uh, it has been rescheduled for this, this Thursday, uh, June eighteen at eleven thirty at the intersection of, um, Baltimore Street, Washington Avenue, and also Broad Street, inviting all the citizens on the Baltimore Street area to come out to this occasion. Uh, Mary Santa Stimson, along with commit, um, County Commissioner, uh, Mr. Lovegood, will be present for this grand occasion. Again, that will be this Thursday at eleven thirty a.m. at the intersection of Broad Street, Washington Avenue, and also Baltimore Street. And I'd like to wish every father, um, in District Three and the City of Mobile, and also my colleagues on the council, a very happy Father's Day. Thank you, Mr. President.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Vice President. Mr. Breger?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just, uh, very quick, I wanted to let folks know who live behind St. Ignatius, just off Springfield Avenue, that the, uh, the resurfacing that you saw in your neighborhood was a result of Spire Utilities. They, uh, came in and did some work where they had to dig up the street in a number of areas, and because there was such a gray area, they were having to dig up the street in order to do their repairs, that crossed the threshold that the, uh, city mandates, that they have to come in and do, and do more of a resurfacing rather than just a lot of different patches. This, uh, ordinance came about because the council had heard from so many people who This ordinance came about because the council had heard from so many people who were complaining that after we resurfaced our streets, utilities would come behind us and then dig up the street, which resulted in a lot of different bumpity bump patches. So anyway, I got a couple of calls and one email from people who wondered because they said, our street's in great shape. Why, why is the city out here resurfacing? Usually we hear from people who are very happy to see the city out resurfacing because their streets are in bad shape, so this was a little different. But it was not the city, it is not the city, it is Spire. They are doing it because they have come in and dug up the street. So in order to keep the street nice and smooth, they are required to do a much wider swath of repair work, which looks like a resurfacing rather than a bunch of the smaller patches. So it's actually very good news, and I just wanted to let people know that that's exactly what's been going on.
Any further? Do I hear a motion?
So move.
We probably moved in second that we were adjourned. All in the discussion? I have a pass in the discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting is adjourned.